All right, I've unmuted up. Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, good. Hopefully, we have fixed our problems with being able to be heard this evening. We are going to open our meeting at 7:02 PM. We have all members in attendance, Sarah Gold, Megan Taylor, Sarah Fox, David Harris, and Emily Baron. We also are live streaming this on the YouTube channel as well as to the MHDschoolcommittee.org site. And all of the documents from our Dropbox are posted there as well if anybody wants to follow along using that. So I think for the moment, all of our tech is working for us, and would. Well done. All right. Well done, sir. Um, I will open things up with commendations. And tonight, we have up for our principal commendations, Mandy Murphy from the Village School. Mandy, go ahead.
I just, I just want to question real quick. Are we, is, I want to confirm, is Lisa taking minutes tonight?
Yes, Lisa's taking minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mandy, you're up.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. This is a great opportunity for us to be able to speak about the great things happening at Village. And first and foremost, I wanted to actually start by highlighting, highlighting our students. Our students have been super resilient, and they continue to show up every single day, in person and online. And at times, they've been role models for us with their resiliency and their excitement for school. I even had a fourth grade student doing the announcements one day, and she stated that she had been waiting to come to Village School since she was six years old. Quite a patient young lady she is. And she's a remote student, so it gives me hope that we're really keeping our community together and moving forward. So shout out to her as well. We have an amazing group of parents this year who have worked on cleaning up our Village Organic Garden. This summer, our garden looked overwhelming and looked like a jungle, and now it's beautiful. They've weeded it, they've worked with PTO. We finally had plumbing done and weeds pulled out, and it looks amazing. The space has been able to be used while we're in this time of social distancing. Students have been doing, they've going outside and doing observations and social distancing from each other. So that's all thanks to those parents that have done a tremendous amount of work with students as well, cleaning up that area. We have parents that have come on board and, and have stuck with us and helped us at lunch. We don't have lunch this year. So during this time, they actually help to cover classes, and they're covering IEP meetings and subbing for teachers when we have teachers out. So that's been really helpful. They do it all with a smile on their face, and every day, they never know what they're facing, and they come in and they're ready to go. So a huge shout out to them. Thinking outside the box, our Allied Arts teachers have created a block in the schedule called Cross-Curricular. And this, you know, sometimes is a little bit of a scheduling snafu, but they were hesitant at first, and I can't tell you the amount of hard work that they put into planning and making this a fun and engaging experience for our students, involving all of the Allied Arts teachers. So that's been fantastic. Our tutors are doing amazing work in grades three, four, five, and six to support remote learning and balancing all of the teachers they're working with and providing remote support and check-ins for students. I've had the opportunity a couple of times to crash advisories, which is our new program this year. Last week, I was in Mr. Murphy's advisory, and the students were giving presentations about their second favorite thing. They were doing slideshow presentations, and to have the principal crash that and give that presentation still is pretty amazing. We've started, Dr. Bucky had the experience the other day while he was here visiting in the morning. We had program teachers that are outside greeting their teacher, their students every day, and they're playing music to change the mood in the morning and make from even more smiling eyes. So a shout out to those teachers that are really trying to make the most positive experience for our students. Teachers are really just excited to see students every day. I was in a fifth grade class observing, and the students were peer editing. And the way that they were able to provide feedback to each other and hear that feedback, they were so respectful and thoughtful. I told a few of them how amazing this was, and it's a hard task for many adults to do. So the fact that they're here, comfortable, sitting at their desks, six feet away and figuring this out is pretty amazing. And I'll end with how thankful I am and proud of all of our teachers, our guidance counselors, our nurses, secretaries, and all of the students again. We're lucky to have a strong Village parent community as well. And as everyone keeps hearing me saying in my Village updates each week, we cannot do this in isolation, and that open communication is so critical to all of the hard work. So it truly takes a village, and we all are working together to make the most positive experience for students. So thank you to everyone who is a member of Village. You're all doing a terrific job, and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you very much, Mandy, because they're all great updates. So, so glad to hear all of that. All right, I will move us into the school committee commendation. I can start us off because I have one or two of them. I just wanted to first commend the Bella Croft and Evelyn and Glover PTOs for all of the hard work that they did with the boot through last Friday night. It was a blast to go through, and I think, you know, there were many, many, many powerful families that caused traffic, you know, coming and going out of town. So I think a lot of people took advantage of that. So I'd like to thank the, all the first responders and the school personnel, Dr. Bucky included, who stood outside, and I sent Dr. Bucky a text the next morning thanking him and said, you know, I never really thought that I would send a text to the superintendent saying, "Thanks for dressing up on your Friday night like a mad scientist and running around in the back of the high school in the snow." That was a really great job. But it was just so true. So it, you know, my, my kids had a blast. Everyone that I heard from just really appreciated it, and it's just another example of how the entire town and community is coming together to really make the best of a difficult situation. So I really appreciate that. And then I've got one more, and I won't completely spoil it for Dan Howell, but I was told that the Marblehead High School acapella, acapella group has a new album that was just out called Six Feet Apart, and that it is on Apple Music, Spotify, Amazon, and YouTube Music. So I will be quiet on that at this point because I'll let Dan Howell follow up on that when he's got his update. Does anybody else have any commendations?
I would like to hear that.
Yeah.
It's exceptional. It's really cool.
Sarah, did you have one?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of build on Mandy's a little bit, that I, we all know that the, the motto of Village is the key, yeah, the keep each other well. And I've, I've seen firsthand, as a parent, had that opportunity to see how they enact that every single day. And it's, it's been, it's always impressive, but in the last few months, it's, it really is quite something to see that no matter what, everyone shows up with a smile on their face, and it, they really are working towards that motto.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else? All right, so that will move us into our student representative update. So Dan Howell, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, uh, yes, I have a few things to talk about tonight. So tomorrow will mark the last day of our two weeks of full remote, and we'll be going back to our hybrid schedule at the high school. And so there's a lot of excitement from both students and teachers to return. It's felt like a bit of a long time, but we're excited to be back. As you just mentioned, the Marblehead Acapella Groups, the Jewel Tones, and Luminescence released their second album, Six Feet Apart, a timely name. And it has eight songs, four from each group, and as you mentioned, available on Apple Music, Spotify, Amazon, YouTube. So yeah, it'd be cool if people listened to it. On Wednesday, there was a peer mentor check-in for the freshmen. So the freshman got a chance to ask questions, building off of what, you know, what they have experienced thus far. And we also talked about some end of the quarter stuff and how to make sure your grades are looking good going into the end of the quarter, how to advocate for yourself, keep organized, and things like that. MHS has begun its own unified esports or video game league. There is a tournament for Rocket League, which is a popular video game, on the 12th and 19th. And today, the superintendent, the assistant, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and Mr. Bauer held a listening session for Marblehead High School juniors and seniors. They also have recently sent out online surveys to hear student feedback. I think this has been really important and a really good thing in this time when, you know, everyone is trying to figure out what the best choice is. Hearing from students has been really appreciated. Yeah, so the quarter ends on, I believe, the 13th, and we will move forward from there.
Great, thank you, Dan. Thanks, Dan. Always good to hear those updates. Okay, so that moves us on to public comment. If anyone would like to make public comments, we use the raise hand function, and I'll call on you. Just a reminder that if anyone is going to make public comments, that they state their name and address for the record. All right, I don't have anybody raising their hand this evening. So, oh, I think someone's raising their hand on their screen. Elmer, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity, I appreciate it. My name is Elmer Magana, and I teach Spanish at the high school, and I coached the boys' varsity soccer team. And pretty much, I wanted to comment about the, the exploration of like the live streaming, the, you know, we've been hearing about. And pretty much, my wife, she's a, she's a high school teacher too, in Manchester Essex. And I know we are Manchester Essex and Marblehead, sometimes the, you know, people compare them. And as many of you know, they went fully remote till January. And so that pretty much enabled them to, to give laptops to the faculty and students. And they also, you know, they also explored the idea of the live streaming. So what they did, they, they pretty much, they set up one classroom with all the necessary technology, and they tested out. They had teachers being like the students physically, and they had other teachers in Zoom. And pretty much like, from, from what I hear from my wife, is that, you know, first of all, like, you, the teacher needs to have like a very powerful mic in order for the students in Zoom to be able to listen to them. But the problem with the, with the headset and the mic, it's that the students in Zoom, they can pick up all the background noise, and they're, and it's hard for them to hear the teacher or the peers. They also find out that the teacher cannot move from one location, or else the students in Zoom are not able to see them. So they have to unfortunately stay still, which is, it's so hard. It will be so hard for me, you know, as well. And pretty much like, what else did she tell me? Oh, shit, she also said that whenever students had a question in Zoom, it took about five to eight minutes for the teacher in the classroom to, to be able to go to the screen and see that the student at home had a question. And I think that would be very frustrating for many of our students who are eager learners, and they, you know, they, they want to participate in. She also mentioned that, let me see. And she, she also mentioned that in order for students in the classroom and at home, all of them have to be in Zoom. Even the students that are in the classroom have to be in Zoom, so they can all be using Google Classroom, or else, you know, like, it wouldn't work. She also said that, you know, in terms of like managing the chat room, because the students at home will have questions. So me as the, as the teacher, I will have to go to the screen and check out the chat room to make sure the, I could answer the students' questions. And pretty much like, those were like the, you know, the, some of the setbacks they find out. And to me, as a, as a high school teacher, you know, I've been teaching here since 2006. I wouldn't want, would like to choose, given the attention to either like, you know, I wouldn't like to choose. I, I, I want to serve the students that I have in front of me. I want to, I want to help them as much as I can, and I will feel very bad for the students in Zoom if I wouldn't be able to help them too. Because as a teacher, I want to help them both. So for me, it'll very, it'll be very hard and stressful because I, I would like to help all students in Zoom and, and the ones in the classroom. So like, to me, like, you know, I, I rather have the system that we have right now. So especially with the cohorts coming in, I'm so excited for next week because I get to see the kids in front of me. And pretty much, like I say, you know, like, if, if we want to explore this, we, we, maybe we could do the same thing. Maybe we can set up a classroom with all the necessary technology to see if it works for us. Because I know every, every, every school system is different. But before moving forward, either we should do that or have like an exploratory committee. Because I know, because obviously, you know, like, I'm, I'm a, I'm a reasonable person, I'm a reasonable teacher. I always said that to my students, so like, if, if, if a parent or, or you got the school committee brings this idea, you know, I'm not going to shut it down. I'm open-minded, I'll say, let's, let's explore it. So, so like, if we're going to do, you know, let's, let's maybe set up a classroom with the technology and then see what the committee does, and if it works, then we move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elmer. Stay tuned, because Dr. Bucky is going to give an update on things that the district has been looking at with that this week.
True that.
David, you've got your hand up?
I do, I, I just am going to break with tradition a bit. I just want to say thank you for that commentary and the insight and coming forward to talk about the challenges that we're all facing and to give us the opportunity to hear what challenges we might have and how we might approach some of those challenges. And it was really nice to hear that. So, so thank you very, very much for coming forward and taking the time to let us hear your thoughts on that.
Thanks, David. Kate Thompson, you have your hand raised?
Super quick, I just wanted to say thank you to the committee. I know I blew up your inboxes a little on getting minutes posted, and I see that so many of them have been, and I see that many more are on the agenda tonight to be voted on. I know that's a lot of work, but I also know it's really important to a lot of people. So I just wanted to say a quick thank you for getting that done.
Thanks, Kate. All right, that, there are no more hands raised for public comments, so I will move us on to the minute. We do have quite a few more on the agenda tonight. So I will, I will ask for a motion to approve. Well, let me first just make sure that nobody's got any issue with, with any of them, just because there are so many, and I would not, I would love to avoid kind of rescinding a motion. Does anybody have anything? Yeah, Mike?
So for October 1st, I didn't actually review those. I think there was a little issue with what got put in the Dropbox. Okay, so those just got put in this morning, and I didn't have a chance to review them. Okay, so if you guys want to vote them, that's fine, I'll just abstain. Um, and then on the 17th, I didn't see updated minutes for the 17th. I know we talked about it in our last meeting, so I just haven't seen the updated version from that.
No, I have not. I, I have a family medical thing I'm dealing with right now, so I realistically will not get to the updating those until the next meeting. So I'd be fine with holding those back.
Okay, that's good. All right, so is the rest of the committee ready to vote on 10-1, or should we hold that as well?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with 10-1.
Okay, all right, so we'll put 10-1 on. Megan, do you want me to put that, make a second motion for that so that you can abstain? I'll do two motions then. All right, so I have a motion to approve the minutes from 6:08, 6:10, 8:06, 8:00, and 8:20. 2020.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Sarah second.
Sarah second. Did anyone have any small additions to vote?
The only thing, I can't, and I should have made a note, so I apologize, I can send it, you know. There was one of them, I think it was the eight where there were some spelling issues. So I think if, you know, you can probably just go through with Lisa, it might be the easiest thing with Lisa, like, for example, Bill McCall's name was spelled wrong, you know, you know, throughout it. So I mean, they're minor, I think we can vote, I just want to make sure we go back and just clean up a little bit. Okay, sounds good, we'll just go back and put things through spell check.
Okay.
All right, sounds good. All right, I will roll call Sarah Gold, yes, Megan Taylor, yes, Emily Baron, yes, Sarah Fox?
Yes.
David Harris. You're muted.
Yes.
All right, so that first one passes five to zero. Then can I get a motion to pass or to approve the minutes from 10-1, 2020?
So moved.
Sarah moved, second, Emily second. Any additions or anything on that? We can run those through spell check too, just to make sure. All right, I will roll call this. Sarah Gold, yes, Megan Taylor, abstain, Emily Baron, yes, Sarah Fox. Sarah, you muted yourself.
Yes.
And David Harris.
Yes.
All right, so those pass four to zero to one. All right, thanks, guys.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Are we up to date now with the exception of 917?
So 917, and then the two that I have not seen are 78 and 810.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so let's just work, maybe work offline with Lisa on those.
There's no reason to not expect those for the, at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Great, great. All right, thank you, everyone.
I just want to note that I think these meetings combined was, all these meetings are like four-hour meetings. So that's why each meeting, I just want to clarify at the time of if Lisa's doing it or if I am, because otherwise, it means I attend every meeting a minimum of twice.
Right, right. Yeah, so I think moving forward, what we're, what we're aiming for, obviously, any kind of, you know, absence, you know, notwithstanding, is that Lisa is going to take care of our first and third, our regularly scheduled school committee meetings. So she'll be that, and then any off-cycle meetings or executive sessions, we'll have you, Sarah, take care of them.
Okay, and then at some point, I think need to look at our executive sessions, because many of those, I come, you go to, you move them to being public documents once the, the reason for executive session is no longer necessary. So a lot of those are actually, should be moved to public at this point.
Okay, we can look into that. All right, John, that moves us to the superintendent's update. So we have technology and live streaming update, and then collective bargaining update, so I will let you take it away.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. It's nice, this update is perhaps the first time where I feel things were more settled than they were chaotic. It has been a really nice week. I was at Glover this morning, I was at Village yesterday morning, the high school, the middle school, and there really does seem to be a slow hum or buzz of routine and norms and consistency. And so that has been a very nice thing from this week. So fact-finding, that's the stage we find ourselves in, in terms of live streaming and what some of the options are. Where I have been is in research interviews with other educators and districts who are doing this, and as many districts are doing it, are different versions of how it's being done. Continue to meet with teachers, we had a teacher listening session yesterday. I meet with the MEA every week, almost school committee every week. I have standing appointments with most members of the school committee, and so I've been able to update them on the fact-finding that we have been doing. We had student listening sessions today, as Dan pointed out in the student update. Mr. Bauer, Assistant Superintendent Murphy and I met with ninth and 10th graders, and then 11th and 12th graders, and they've had good things to share and thoughts. Capability presentations, I met with the Director of Technology last Friday after Thursday's school committee meeting to talk about the audit that started this week and to talk about some proposals from vendors. We had a very fun leadership team meeting in that room over there on Monday where a vendor presented technology that was really interesting, and it actually spoke to a specific thing that the teacher raised this evening about background noise. And this particular technology is so sophisticated that it blocks it out. And he used the example that if somebody were blow drying their hair, if they started talking, it would shut out the blow dryer and just pick up. And so schools are pretty noisy places with people walking by in the corridors or vacuuming, or there are lots of ambient noise in schools. And so it also had a camera that followed the person. And so if he was seated and then stood up, the camera went up, and if he went over to the whiteboard, it followed him. So we will get a demo of that. Again, it's like the teacher was sitting in on that presentation to pilot in a classroom at the high school. During last week's school committee meeting, there was a parent emailing me that if they were to fund two Owl cameras, if we would be willing to pilot those. That was an immediate yes, and so that is something that's happening. The remote tech audit began this week, and then they will be onsite next week at the high school to look at infrastructure issues. Some of the conversations I've had with other superintendents were make sure that you explore your policies because this could have policy implications, and they found in their districts that it did, in particular, privacy concerns for students and staff. And then the big question is the investment, you know, exploring what that investment will be, and how much will the infrastructure upgrades themselves be, and then the technology, whatever hardware that we would, and what is the longevity of that? Do we invest in something that would not have a long-term benefit to the district? And so those are all ongoing conversations. Once we do the exploration, we'll come back to school committee. conversations. Once we do the exploration, we'll come back to school committee with a recommendation from the administration, and then I would anticipate that that would be a school committee vote, and then depending on that vote, we would move into what would be like the installation and the use. Whatever we pick, teachers are going to need training. So that's where we are. I put together a little calendar so that you could see that from the initial conversation on the 20th to today, there has been something almost every day, if not multiple things. So I I want people to know that we are really researching this in earnest and reaching out to other districts and talking to educators, and, you know, you talk to one that gives you a recommendation to talk to somebody else. So it's been really fruitful for me, and what, learning what works, what doesn't work, suggestions for if they had it to do over again, or so it, that's been very helpful. So you know me, I love a good Venn diagram, that we will use data collected through this fact finding to make an informed decision. And so I don't think there's any sort of, I don't think there's any shortage of information that I collect, and I think the school committee sees that, that we do surveys, and we do listening sessions, which are now more conversations, rather than just listening sessions, more back and forth in real time. So surveys for teachers and paraprofessionals and tutors and remote learning, then we have these conversations, and then I report out, and I put things in the weekly update, I try and cover things in fireside chats. I do terrible screencastifies, because I'm not very good at it yet, but I'm getting better with each one, I hope, and then reporting out to the school committee. But the decision-making is grounded in data, and so we won't just make a decision to make a decision, that it will be well-informed and benefit the district in the long term. So that's an update on, I think if I go to the next slide, it's going to say collective bargaining, so.
All right.
If committee members have questions?
Can you go back one slide?
Yes, of course.
I'll just.
Oh, two slides, one more, I'm sorry.
Quickly before Megan asks questions, I'll just toss in that I actually was connected with the Chair of Manchester Ethics School Committee this week, and we talked about a number of things, but one of them was the the use of technology and how they're live streaming kids into classrooms, because as Mr. McGonagall noted, the high school is remote. I'm not sure, I think the middle school is remote, if I'm remembering correctly, but the lower schools are in-person, hybrid, I believe. So we, and and they're using technology with with those kids. We did talk about that and sort of the learning curve with it, and, you know, I, from what she said, things are going well in their district. You know, they've got their own set of headaches and things to deal with as well, but, you know, I still, none of this is easy, no matter what decision we make, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right, Megan.
Um, so you talked about the vendor providing a setup that we can use to pilot and also, I don't know if it was a parent or PTO, I can't remember what you said.
Uh, it was a parent that engaged the boosters and the PTO at the high school to get two of the Owl.
Okay. So what's the timeline on both both of those pilots? And are they, it sounds like they're different technology?
They are, yes.
So, or what's the timeline around those?
I believe that the Owls were ordered, although I think Kathy Hennessy said at the admin meeting, there might be, they might be backordered, because you can imagine the number of districts or schools or organizations that are trying to implement something like this. The vendor from Monday said that he could have something to us next week, not as in the coming Monday, but a week out, and that is a plug, plug and play, for lack of a better word. It would not require any sort of a major installation.
Okay, so with the Owl cameras, was there any other? I can't think of the word, but anything else we need besides the Owl, we don't need a screen or a TV, or just literally the Owls?
Okay.
As far as I know.
Okay, and do we have teachers who are willing to do the pilot?
I believe Mr. Bauer does, yes.
Okay. So as soon as they, so the Owl's here, so we can set that up and get going.
Don't know that.
No, it's ordered. But the other guy can have them in.
Next week.
Next week, okay. Okay, and then have they given you any indication on cost?
Yes, if we were to outfit the high school with the vendor Valley Communication, the technology that we saw on Monday, it's $78,000.
Just for the technology?
Just for the.
Because they haven't done the infrastructure assessment yet?
No.
How long do they, that's going to start this week, right?
They're doing the remote audit this week. They will be onsite next week.
Okay.
I would imagine by the end of next week, they would be, have some sort of a recommendation for what needed to be done and how much that would cost.
And then we'll do the pilot the week after.
Yep.
Okay.
Things are moving.
Great. Great update.
I just have, yeah, a couple of questions. So with the classrooms that have this setup, how are we going to assess how well it's working or not working?
Student feedback, teacher feedback?
And then can we do what the teacher suggested and maybe set up a class for more teachers so that, like what he said, they did in Manchester, of like, that way more teachers can actually experience it instead of just the three, and you know what I mean, to get more teacher feedback?
True.
Like set up that classroom prototype?
I think with the technology that we saw the vendor do on Monday, it's very mobile. He said teachers could actually take it home, because it sits on a tripod. And so I could see if there was a Spanish one teacher that wanted to use it during block A, and then a chemistry teacher that wanted to use it block B.
But it might also be good to set it up where the teachers are sitting as students in the classroom and in a Zoom so that they can actually understand what, how the students are feeling.
Almost like a PD type thing?
Yeah, right, so like, just get it from the student perspective as well as the teacher perspective. I think that might be a good lesson. And also, I know that it is helpful if there is a screen in the back of the classroom that shows the actual Zoom class, so it's not that the teacher has to look at their laptop. So if there are extra, I mean, we would have to do an evaluation, but are there, like the screen right here?
Yep.
That could project the Zoom class off of the teacher's computer so that they're looking at that and the students, because that's one way to set up a classroom that might be more successful than to just have the TV bar or the video bar and then the small laptop, because there's a lot of going back and forth with that. But yeah, no, I think it's it's good.
Great. Can I ask, sorry, just one more question?
Yeah, then Sarah, I'll go to you.
Oh, yeah, sorry, just made to think of it, but with the policy, is it worth, I don't know if the policy committee, subcommittee is planning a meeting, but just to have an idea of what policies we might need to look at, because that is, you know, I mean, obviously, we can kind of have other meetings, but within our own schedule, that kind of is a process too.
Yep, I can reach out to Dorothy and see, and then I could also, I mean, I would assume Manchester Ethics, since they're doing this, is one of those districts that's worked with that, so I can certainly reach back out to the chair there as well. And yeah, we are gonna, we're we're working on scheduling a meeting and hopefully next week, if not early the week after. Thank you. Sorry, Sarah. Sarah?
Um, so one thing about, as far as the policy goes, we need, whether we adopt this or not, we need to look at that, because we are currently live streaming. We are currently, for anybody in the K through six model that is fully remote, they have a live educator all day. Streaming, we're in their home, they're in our homes. The privacy thing has not been an issue, so this is already happening for hundreds of students. So, so, you know, we are doing this. I I would, I would try to loop in with those teachers and even those families and find out how it's working, that piece of it, the privacy piece of it, and and the, you know, all of that, because we're doing it, and and as a full remote family, I can say we're doing it with shining success, amazing, amazing results. We haven't had, you know, a huge negative as far as something unfolding on the screen, and trust me, if it was going to happen, it was going to happen in my house. So it's it's been, it's been good. It's a learning curve, but as the teachers keep telling everyone, we're in this together, and that seems to carry us through. As far as the investment exploratory goes, I think we're all aware that we're going to need infrastructure, and Dr. Bucky's been very, very clear about that. My sense is, no matter whether we adopt live stream or not, we need some infrastructure and investment for this. We are going to be using technology much more heavily in our buildings, so I think it's very choppy in many of our buildings, if not all of them right now. So I think that that's something we need to kind of start, start moving on and price out and and start that ball rolling now. Now, for the Owl pieces, am I correct in that it's roughly $1,000 per classroom?
Um, I think the one that they looked at was 1,200, but yes, roughly.
Okay. And when we say that there's, there's got to be, you know, backorders, are we talking a couple of weeks or a few months?
Uh, I don't know, to be honest, Sarah, but I can find that out.
Okay, because as great as the program may be, if we can't get our hands on it until May, it's it's useless to us. Have you gotten any more positive feedback from faculty on using this? I know at the get-go, there was a lot of hesitation, but I think with anything there was going to be. Have you gotten more people kind of coming forward with a little bit more excitement, or are you still getting a lot of hesitation?
I think there's still more hesitation than there is excitement.
And I think this might be where talking to those people who are doing it successfully at the early remote learners period might be helpful.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. Um, I guess the the only, one of the pieces that kind of has been coming in and out of my head this week is sort of a wondering around how long we're going to be doing this, and obviously, no one has the answer to that. I wish we all did, but, you know, I wonder if at some point, if that question is being asked from other, by other districts and kind of being put out there to the commissioner, you know, we can certainly work on the school committee side of things to sort of try to get at some of the leaders from the state level that have access to so much more information to see if, you know, if they have any kind of trajectory on it. I know it sounds like a ridiculous question coming out of my mouth, but it would help to know if we're gonna, you know, if if this is, if this is, if we're going to be sitting in this same spot next, next winter, going into next winter, these things start to take on a totally different meaning than if, you know, by the end of this school year, we're looking at sort of differing learning models that we're able to act with.
I did speak to an educator in a different district, and she thinks that you will always, at least in the near future, will have the option to remote, to be remote, because you know, nothing is clear yet. So if we, I think it's great if we can kind of get a feeling if we're going to be using, needing this type of technology for a while.
Yeah.
It's an investment. And then I also, I, when I met with Dr. Bucky earlier this week, I said maybe instead of buying all the cameras, we invest in some of the newer technology that can do this, but also that we would want to keep in the high school classrooms anyway, so maybe start kind of phasing that in, like, phasing out some of the old and buying some of the new stuff, so we're not just buying a bunch of cameras that could potentially not, yeah, be an interesting idea.
I I just want to clarify that this is for the hybrid, that when we're fully remote, we're able to do it well, because everyone's fully remote, so this investment would be for when we're in hybrid.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so collective bargaining.
That actually was a great point, because that was one of my questions. One other thing I just want to touch on, and this kind of jumps ahead to the building a little bit. It was a couple of meetings ago, I did ask if we are planning for the new building, for it to be able to run everyone on live video feed at all times, all classrooms, and our OPM, one of the members of the OPM team said that a brand new school they opened in Billerica less than a year ago, state of the art, they already are having to retroactively fit, or retrofit that, because even though it it opened less than a year ago, it didn't have that capability. So that they are going to be looking into making that building have everything it needs hardwired so that we can livestream, because in all reality, if we're opening that building next year in September, we, we may need to open a new building and livestream.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the pieces that the Chair at Manchester Ethics said, that, you know, a lot of their buildings are quite new, and so it was, it, they were set up with that infrastructure going in, so it needed a different, it was a different decision-making process.
Ready for collective bargaining?
I think we are ready for collective bargaining.
Just when I thought there couldn't have more fun, I find out that we do collective bargaining for all six of our bargaining units in the same year, and so Jason Silva and I will be going through our first round of bargaining in Marblehead, and so we have scheduled very auspiciously for Friday, the 13th, to do our opening meeting with Liz, our council, and with town council and Jason to just talk structure, process, timeline, for how things, how we envision the process going, and there are multiple ways. I've done bargaining before, but I'm not sure the process that's used here, and so to get an understanding of that, and then I know that we have two school committee members who will sit in on the negotiations once those start, so just wanted to give you an update. I his, my experience is, this is a little late, but we're in a global pandemic, and so we will start these conversations and go from there.
Great. John, do you think that by our next meeting then, you would be able to kind of give us an update on what that timeline is going to look like for us?
Very much so, I hope so, yes.
All right.
And then my last is just what, the response to last Thursday's school committee meeting has been really nice. And it was echoed in the teacher listening sessions, and so Nan and I are doing Thankful Thursdays to express appreciation for our educators, and today we had Chubie's chocolate chip cookies. One of the teachers in a survey wrote that healthy food and coffee is always nice. I think we missed the mark today with healthy food. We're going to miss it even further next week, but there's a little teaser for what will be on the horizon, but I just want to thank Marblehead families and parents for doing what you guys do so well, and that is to see or hear a need and rise to it. And we are indebted to our PTOs who facilitate all the great work of parents who want to do good things, and so I just want to make sure that they get a shout-out for jumping in and filling in that space for people who want to do good things, and the teachers notice it. They have noticed a change in some of the things that they're seeing and hearing in response to that, and so I would just express as superintendent, my appreciation for the fact that people, to use a word that we use all too often now, pivoted so quickly to a more civil tone for our educators who are just simply exhausted.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, so Channel, have you stopped sharing?
Yes.
And then we'll move us on to our schedule of bills. So we have a schedule, we had a schedule in our packet today. They'll ask for a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling $1,795,993.90. So moved, Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second.
Actually, I think Emily has to abstain from this.
Yes. Uh, okay. So Emily did not second it.
I'll second it.
All right, Sarah, second. This is a building committee schedule, so it has, if I did it correctly or wrong, but it's been approved at the building committee level already. Committee has gone through everything, and then sent it in your, in our packet, so. Any questions on it?
I missed the last building committee meeting, so I just want, I had a quick question for. I missed the last building committee meeting, so I just want, I had a quick question for, um, David. The NOBIS bill for the 66,000, it looked like that was for additional services. Can you just roughly tell me what those, what, what that was for?
I
And I think it broke up between two months. It was 25 month and the 41 or something was for last month. Or, or in, they broke it up, I think.
Yeah, so not having that information in front of me, but my, my recollection, Sarah, is that so NOBIS was helping us work with the additional soil remediation that took place onsite that needed to be stood and then taken offsite to various locations based, based on the quality of the soil. So that was principally what the, what the additional, you know, charges were related, related to NOBIS and what they were doing. I thought they were a little bit less than, than 66,000, but as far as they are a contractor through RDA and through Gene, and it was recognized that there has been some additional work due to the soils and due to, um, some of the work that's taking place at Tower School as well. So that's essentially what, what those costs were related to.
No problem. It's essentially like onsite monitoring and like any unsuitables or something like that.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Thank you, David.
But it did, it did go over, it did go over the contracted amount. That was, that was listed in Gene's contract, so that might be the difference. The 66,000 did exceed the contracted amount. I think the net amount that it exceeded it by was $40,000. So, um, that was, uh, discussed at the committee and, um, hopefully that's the last we'll see of that since everything is offsite at this point.
Okay, thank you for that note.
All right, I will call for a real call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Emily Barron? Sarah Thaw?
Yes.
And David Harris?
Yes.
All right, this schedule passes four to zero to one. Thank you. All right, so that brings us on to the presentation on the homeschooling policies, IHBT and IHBTR. I will ask Nan to take it away. Nan, do you have? Can you share?
If you make me a co-host, I can share.
All right, let me find you. Bye. My other computer.
I think we should identify the additional guests we have at the meeting, Sarah. That's too cute.
All right, Nan, take it away.
All right, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
All right. For some reason I cannot, so hang on just a second.
So we're seeing that you're sharing your screen, but we're seeing a black screen.
Okay. Well, that doesn't work. Okay. I'm going to go back and try this again.
All right.
All right.
We're closer that time.
Okay. Let's see, I'm, I, I don't understand you, um, what's happening here. Dr. Bucky, I'm going to share it with you just in the event. I'm sharing it in Google right now with you, just in the event I can't share my screen.
I actually have it pulled up on one of my computers. So if you can't get it, then I can just share mine and you can
Try one more time and see. How about that?
There we go.
All right. All right, great. So here we are. Marblehead Public Schools is all districts in the Commonwealth, offers families the opportunity to choose an educational environment for their children. And homeschooling is one of those options. So if you are a family interested in pursuing homeschooling, there is a link for you on our school website page. And it, once you hit that link, this is the face of, of the page. It provides you the notification form, which I'll share with you in just a moment. It provides, um, and some information around a portfolio review, which is expected at the end of the school year. It's a collection of student work and samples of student progress throughout the year. And it also informs you that you are, although you provide a homeschool environment, you are encouraged to have your children participate in extracurricular activities in Marblehead. So if you are a family that, um, decides to pursue, this is the form that we would suggest that you fill out at this time. As you can tell, it's a very limited form in terms of being able to provide all of the information that is required. So on this form, we have space for four different students. So if you are a parent of one or more kids that you want to homeschool, you provide their personal information. And then, um, you are provided very limited face, space, uh, to share how you are going to go about teaching your child. So in the, in this very limited space, you would provide curriculum materials, standards-based assessments that you've selected, what you're going to use in reading, math, social studies and science. And then as you get, um, into the upper elementary and high school, you might include some world languages and some other areas of expertise. So my proposal, uh, is to, and work a little bit on deepening this application process. So here we have, um, some of the things that are being asked of, of, of parents and to some changes, proposed changes to the process that I think would help families. We have providing more perspect, pers- um, prescriptive approach to where and how to present curriculum selection and educational planning. So that is the reference I made to including the materials, the tech selection, online programming, and maybe having a resource that connects you to, um, all of those materials that families can use to serve in some way as a menu to help them navigate homeschooling. Some sort of throughout the process, somewhere to set expectations around the assessment of student performance in each content area. What kind of standardized testing are you going to use? Children and students are, uh, allowed to join districts for standardized testing. So if families wanted to bring their students back for their annual MCAS testing, that is something that we can accommodate according to the department. And what, how, how do they collect and process through samples and progress? Or what kind of progress reports they're going to use? I'm also proposing transitioning this process to an online, um, application. And I'll be able to share with you an exemplar from another district I was able to locate. Offering guidance on the process for determining parent ability to serve as an effective educator. That is, uh, according to the, the state guidelines, something that districts have to be able to, um, vouch for. So there really isn't any guidance around that. And then the other component that I feel is so critical that's missing from our application process is an inquiry into, um, specific student needs. So is a student on an IEP being serviced by an, um, individualized education plan? Is there a 504 plan? Are there kinds of supports that are needed in a student's, um, educational life to be successful? And if so, is the district going to play a role in supporting the, um, those services? So I put a little graphic there to give you a sense of where some of that additional, how that additional information might look on an application. So here's an exemplar I found from Lowell Public Schools. This is an online form that parents connect to via their district website. The first page is all of that personal information, the student's age, name, date of birth, um, whether this is a new request or if it's been an existing plan that the family has been, um, using to, to educate their child. So really basic information on that initial page. The second page, uh, goes a little bit deeper and gets, gets, um, to what grade level they are, um, the student is at. And then the parents have the opportunity to fill in, in depth, the curriculum and content that they're going to be using to instruct con, the various content areas. And you can see here that they also offer an opportunity for other subjects. So if, if we have a upper, um, secondary student that is going to be taking something that's deviates from what's listed here, those courses can be included as well. So here they would fill in the instructional plan, um, the topics covered, duration and expected results. So that would include some of the assessment work, um, and describing methods and/or the programs used. Some of the requests that we get currently get in, um, Marblehead do refer to outside programs, online schooling and programs like that. So it would be an opportunity for parents to fill, fill in more detail there. I'm going to pause on this page just to see if, up to this point, if there are any questions.
So currently where we talk about, um, evaluating a parent's ability to educate the child, um, are we? What onus is on the district for, if we say no, we don't feel this parent has the ability to educate a child? What onus on a district is there to explain our statement?
Well, I think that would be what we would unpack in, in, in having that conversation. Currently, there is nothing in the application process that includes, um, accountability on the district's part for making that determination. That's just language that the department has as a requirement, but it's not currently part of our process. And, um, at this point, our process does not include the portfolio and collection of materials and assessment documentation either.
So one concern I do have is I think this year is a, is an anomaly in the homeschool world. A lot of people use the term homeschool almost incorrectly, if, if you would. And they're using it as a way to kind of find something that, that fits in a world that nothing fits. But I think in a, in a normal, non-COVID environment, the people who are choosing homeschool are doing so because they do not feel the public school system is meeting their educational vision or needs for their child. So I, I do have a hard time taking that decision away from them in, in certain ways, um, through this portfolio, um, if you will. I want to make sure that, again, like, I, I think for a year like this, it fits more where so many people are saying, I'm leaving the system and in their head, they're thinking, I'm just going to hit pause for a year and come back, which is not what homeschooling is for. But for the, for, but for families that choose this as an eternal alternative to the public education system because it's not meeting their needs, I don't know if having them do a portfolio that's prescriptive to what we've deemed to be the correct way to educate people really is appropriate either, if you know what I mean.
So I think that's, you know, up to the committee to decide. This is a binding process that parents enter into with us. So, and, and in accordance to state law. So I, I, how that's interpreted this year versus next year, I'm not sure. But this is just through the process. Um, and I, I have been able to really help and assist a lot of families that didn't have a direction when they initially applied. And we, we do always, once the application is approved, it, it is approved in that there is a framework established for the families. We would never in Marblehead leave a family kind of struggling. So I've talked through what an assessment might look like for a student. I've kind of helped families understand that process and kind of think about what they might be setting aside so that in the spring, when we meet. So there, there isn't anybody that's really not understanding that process right now. But I think the intent here is just, we're new to the district. This is a form that we've ended up using a lot because of the situation. And there's just ways that I think moving forward into 2021, we can improve for next year.
I think it's important to note too, when, um, in the subcommittee piece of this, the, the criteria for the qualifications of the parents was, was relatively low. It was, you know, we were talking about things like requiring a high school education, or a high school diploma, um, or equivalent thereof. So it's not as though we're, you know, going to require the, the parent to have, you know, a master's level teaching degree to, in order to homeschool their, their children. Um, and I think, you know, there is state law behind this and there's a reason that we have a homeschool policy. It's because we, we need to make sure, and we're tasked with making sure that the children who live within our district are being educated, um, and educated to a, a certain standard. So, and I think, you know, I actually know, not here, but having grown up in the Midwest, know of quite a few people who do do homeschooling and do it for many different reasons. And I think the ones that I know first all have a college degree, but also would have absolutely no problem providing all of this information. It would just, you know, it's, it's taken from, from most people choosing to actually homeschool and not, you know, the COVID aspect of this, but they're, they're very serious about it. And they have very high standards, um, for their kids. That's been my experience.
And I, and I would say that that's been my experience in talking with the parents in Marblehead that are, that have considered this, this year. Very thoughtful, very difficult decision for them, um, if, if it wasn't their initial plan for their child. And they were very eager to have the conversation around what might help guide them curriculally, so.
I think it's important to note too, that at any point in time, a child can transition from a homeschooling environment back into a public school environment. And that if we have not set and, and maintained any set of standards for those children's education, we're, we're almost setting ourselves up to have to provide massive amounts of support to get that child who wasn't being given a, a, a good homeschooling, um, education to, to bring them up to speed and, and get them back on track.
Okay, so it's not, we're not denying any, like, if there is a parent who wants to homeschool their child, we're not denying anybody that right. We're just help facilitating the best way to do it, correct? We've not denied anybody the right to homeschool their child.
Yeah.
Yeah, Megan? Um, so Nan, first of all, I just want to thank you for doing this. I think it looks really, um, much more comprehensive. To be honest, when I saw that form for the first time, I was surprised at how basic it was because that you can't fit anything in one line. So I think what we've done here is very good, much more comprehensive and hopefully, you know, makes the parents feel more supported as well because you really do have to think about all those things upfront and make sure you've got the structure in place. And, um, so I think this is great. Thank you. The one thing, just you mentioned briefly about the timeline piece of it. Because obviously I think you did spend a lot of time over the summer and the fall with families who were moving to, um, the homeschool. with families who were moving to um the homeschool option. Um, so is this something that we're looking to implement for the next school year? Or do you would you expect more families to decide to homeschool throughout the year? What's your expectation there?
So I I guess I don't really have an expectation. I think we could work and to determine that timeline um as I I'm willing to work at any rate you you all are looking to move forward with. The form that we have now doesn't serve families well, but it it serves families. And um I'm able to circle back and have deeper conversations around content. I think it would, you know, so so I don't mind if this takes a little bit of time or you, you know, we process this for a few months or, you know, it's not going. I guess what I'm saying is this form doesn't um necessitate of our 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 process. So we can, we can still continue to um review and approve homeschooling process uh requests without this particular form. So um I I will work at your leisure, whatever you feel, um whenever you feel this is, we're ready to move forward with this.
Okay. Do you have any families that are in the queue, for lack of a better term, right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just sorry, one other question around um progress. So who actually determines if the student has made progress?
So we we have it, my understanding is in the past, a parent um may or may not come to central office to talk about that or have a phone call with somebody about that. Some parents have had that experience. Um, some folks that I've talked to that have homeschooled in Marblehead for a few years have not had that experience. So I don't think there's a consistent approach to measuring progress for our homeschooled students. Um, so I think having parents in the beginning, when they're initially thinking about it and planning for it and using a tool like this, having to think about that in advance helps them um frame up what they're gonna use to measure their students. And um some of the parents that I've talked to are not even aware that the that we have state standards that guide what every student needs to kind of be focused on every year at every grade level. So um, you know, having some sort of common assessment or something that they're teaching towards um helps that for families. But as of right now, Megan, I I don't believe there's a process for checking progress.
So would that be part of this?
Yes. So um the portfolio piece, um let me move forward here. Um, so right here, the this next page gets parents thinking about the method of assessment um and the different varieties. And then please supply a brief description of the assessment method used. So that that's where, you know, some some of the parents that are homeschooling now are using programs that have built-in assessments. Um, and there are some parents that I've been working with that we don't traditionally do in Marblehead. Um, but we have, I have been sharing some of our curriculum resources with parents. And with that comes some of our district assessments so that they have that support. But that that would be where that planning piece would kind of help them start thinking about that.
And then, and this is just me maybe not understanding the whole process. But then, if you're homeschooling, are you are you required to meet those same state standards?
According to Desi, the expectation would be whatever curriculum you're using would be aligned to what the state standards are.
Yeah. Thank you.
They may be very non-traditional ways to get to those standards. And then um the the parent commitment statement that I I I we don't really engage into a commitment in our process, but I liked this language in terms of accountability for parents. In terms of the expectation. And then the the, you know, kind of entering into and agreeing to the the nine hundred to nine ninety hours of instruction. Just kind of formalizes um the responsibility of 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 the process.
Yeah, I think it'd be important to note too that the the um the red piece over on the side, the agreement, that that, you know, those things aren't taken lightly and that the district would be attempting to work with the parents, you know, to the best of their ability before something like a chin would be put into place.
Right, right. So that's, those are just some of the the um thinking that I've had and conversations that I've had with parents and what might make this process a little bit smoother for everybody. Um, so open to feedback, open to timelines and um whatever direction you all feel is is the best one to go in at this point.
Absolutely. Um, so I think it's important to note that this this much of this piece is really the IHVGR aspect of that um and how things are put into action. And then um the piece, if I'm remembering correctly, because of our subpo- some subcommittee policy was um almost a month ago, that the one of the biggest changes on the IHVTR would be the um the piece about having a minimum requirement for parents to be able to enter into a homeschooling situation. Sort of that high school level uh education. Put my crap?
Yes.
Okay.
So the policy subcommittee has reviewed the stuff already?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, and I think it said um on one of Nancy's pages, it said ten nine, that sounds about right.
Yeah.
So what do you ask as a committee to do tonight?
Nothing tonight. This is basically like, you know, it was given to the subcommittee and now we're handing it over to the school committee to to review and process. And then it would be on the next um the next meeting, our second meeting in November uh for a vote. And and, you know, if it needed to be put onto the December one, we can do that, you know, but this would be sort of, we're just following our process.
So do you expect modifications to this? Or is it just if we have?
I think it's just if the committee um has modifications.
So if we're not im- implementing this till next year, that's fine. I do have reservations about the line about the minimum requirements when we as a district aren't even providing that for our students right now. Um, so I I think it's unrealistic to ask us to to set have parents sign off on that under penalty of Chin's officer when when we're not doing it. Um, and then, but again, it's anom- an anomaly of a year and we're we're doing what everybody in the state is doing. Um, did you or anybody on the policy committee ever uh reach out to? I know there's several consortiums on the North Shore um where particularly at the upper grades, you know, people belong to these, my understanding is they belong to these homeschool consortiums because not every parent can teach, you know, chemistry and calculus and all this. So that they do have these consortiums. Did anybody reach out and just say, is this typical? Is there something you recommend adding that maybe we didn't think to add or subtracting that? You know, just just getting a little bit of feedback from people who specialize in this?
I didn't reach out to the consortia- homeschool consortium, but I reviewed probably forty different districts um application forms. And so I I kind of um I got a good sense of what how districts are um collecting information from families and what the language is. And um the one I I found in Lowell kind of combined the best of the best electronically.
I think the electronic version of it is great. Um, and maybe there's even a way for them to electronically upload their port portfolios if we go that way.
Yes.
Um, to kind of streamline it for people. Um, the reason I said reach out to the consortium is there may be something from their side that they're saying, you know, we wish, we wish districts were asking us this or we wish, you know, something. So may maybe there is a piece, but maybe it's not important as well.
Well, I think what we have um current, what I presented tonight isn't aligned in aligned with what the state requires the districts. So I think we could have optional questions maybe for parents to answer. Um, but I know what was presented tonight is is mandatory in terms of collecting information to make an informed decision on.
Okay. And then at the lower levels, do we? Are there state frameworks for teaching science and social studies at the lower elementary levels? Or is it much, it's much looser though, isn't it?
No, it, there are frameworks.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I I just didn't think the kids did, it's not something they do on a daily basis.
No, it's, it it can be embedded in a lot of the literacy instruction. Um, so and even in the math instruction. So community learning is this is um big in social in a social studies topic in first grade. Um, so you can do that in a lot through texts in in a reading block.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you, Nan.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that'll move us to a follow-up conversation on the school committee goal. Um, I I had texted everyone the other day to offer a spoken with Dorothy Presser and the only time that she really has in the near future is Tuesday, November twenty-fourth in the evening um to to work on Sarah, what she had requested, kind of a team building around the goals. Um, and I was gonna email her back today because she was gonna email me a a kind of a a little bit of a tee up for that so that we could start thinking about the goals so that we were sort of shortening that meeting and then also kind of making it so that we would probably come away with our goals. Um, since, you know, I think Megan, you noted last week that it doesn't make, or you know, if if we're not setting goals until January, February, it sort of um, you know, isn't the best situation. We should get these goals set as soon as possible. Um, so I don't know where, what everybody's schedule is for November twenty-fourth. If that, and and what kind of a deal breaker that is.
Did she give any um thoughts on how long it would be?
A couple hours.
Like two hours?
Yeah, I'd say probably a minimum two hours because we did talk about a different date um that it I she had something going, but it was a possibility that it could be canceled. Um, that, but it was a building committee night and so, and I said, okay, you know, could we tap it on the hour before the building committee and she said, no, that that it would be longer than than just the hour.
So I'm just, I can't remember what time you said, was it a seven o'clock?
I think seven o'clock is what we had talked about. She may have flexibility to do a six o'clock. Um, I could reach out to her.
I mean, you know how I feel about these. I just wanna get them done. I think I, in my mind, it's kind of two separate things, right? Like goals and team building. So maybe team building is is a goal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that said, I mean, it's two weeks away. It's my right to, three weeks away. So I mean, if we can come out of that agreeing to the goals and then and what our process is for kind of checking our progress, then I'm okay to leave.
Okay.
But but the expect- expectation is they're done, we walk out of there.
Right, right. I think that that should be a reasonable expectation. Um, and if you think about it, you know, I I don't think we're setting them tonight given sort of the 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 process of this. So we'd be looking at the, that's a Tuesday, we'd be looking at the Thursday right before it for our next meeting anyways.
Okay.
So does that, the twenty-fourth work for everyone? Speak now for our whole piece.
I can make it work.
It's fine. And I think that um if we could start it an hour earlier, just because it being that week is fine, but we'll make whatever work.
All right, sounds good. I'll check to see with Dorothy if six o'clock can work. Um, otherwise, you know, I will all schedule it for seven.
Right, maybe twenty?
The twenty-fourth, yeah. Um. All right, so then school committee website update.
Um, well, I don't really have much to update. I mean, it's live, it's been live for a month. So hopefully people are finding it useful. Um, what we have been doing, well, really what Lisa and Emily have been doing is um making sure that the meeting materials are out there before our meeting starts on Thursday so that the public can follow along. Um, and then posting the recording out there, you know, within a matter of days, I think. Um, once, now that we have most of the minutes voted, those will all go up for the on those meeting dates too. So all our information should be there. I guess the one thing I would ask of this committee is, again, those subcommittees, if you can, if we can get into a regular rhythm, you know, let's just get those meetings out on the calendar for the rest of the year. Um, that would be really great. Um, and again, like we don't have to, if we if you don't have a reason to meet, like, don't meet, but let's just have the rhythm laid out so everybody's aware of what it is. Um, especially because we haven't got that push piece sorted out yet. And that's, you know, the next thing that we'll work on. Um, I think that it, I don't know, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add?
Megan.
All the past minutes that have been voted are.
All that's dated, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
No. I I had also talked with Lisa about that because based on the school committee schedule, we can then go forward with the building committee schedule for um January through June. Since um the building committee is essentially meeting once a month, but there are some times we might need to meet more than that. So um Lisa was gonna work on that and then we plug in the building committee dates as well so that we could have that information posted. So.
Thank you. Great.
Emily, oh, I was just um saying that I think all the past minutes that have been voted are uploaded already. Yep. So they're out there. Yeah, and just to be clear, since we're sort of going back and forth between fiscal years with meetings, it's minutes at this point. So we're gonna keep everything from FY nineteen.
That's, yep.
Am I number spread? FY nineteen is gonna be on the old website. FY twenty is gonna be on the new website. Okay.
And that's, yeah, that's.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, David.
And once again, not to merge the two, but I'd like to thank Emily for her work on keeping the building committee website updated where um we are up to date with our minutes and presentations. And Cindy Schiefer with all of the updates on um the weekly notices that get posted by Gilbane. So, you know, we've been trying to keep up with our minutes as well to make sure they're out there and available for anybody who wants to see them.
So does that mean Emily's officially our website guru? A new title we can add.
Definitely for the building committee. You can make her the school committee guru too.
Um, I just wanna double check that we're still keeping live the old website because that has a lot of information going back years for things we haven't, you know, that we don't redo every year, that we do every five years, every ten years, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, it's just sort of the the minutes and the schedules that are starting that um July one that are gonna be on this new one. And then sort of just easier access in finding some of the the um nothing bulk type data on, you know, who is who's on the school committee, you know, how do you reach them? Um, and we can, you know, from what I understood from Kate originally was that we can add things onto it if we keep it.
So can I just clarify that?
Yeah.
So absolutely, the calendar is kind of the bread and butter of the website because that's the biggest moving piece for us. But um our website does have a link, you know, does have a link for things like policies, for example. So right now that does still exist on the um on the district website.
Yep.
But we, you know, we link to it from our webs- from our new website so that it literally should be a one-stop shop.
Yeah.
So if there's information, current information that um is not accessible through our website, then that's what we should be looking to do for this, you know, for the next phase. Right? Anything that's technically archived or from a previous year, then then finally you can figure that out. But anything that's current should be accessible through that website.
And I I think it is.
I'm I'm pretty sure it is, but if, I mean, if you guys find something.
Lay it back, right. All right, great, thank you. So then that brings us to the school properties discussion. And this is a discussion that comes from a correspondence that David mentioned at the end of our meeting last week. So that um that letter was in everyone's drop box. And I had also then had a conversation with Jason Silva sort of immediately afterwards. Um, and and he talked with me a little. immediately afterwards, um and and he talked with me a little bit about um some similar pieces um that that there's some of a couple of committees going on at the town level that are interested in some of the properties that that we have that um Mr. Gassner, in his correspondence, also referenced. Um so as we said last week, we're gonna very bring this letter and that conversation into the full committee. I know Dr. Buffy, you had a conversation with Jason as well prior to the meeting, where where David talked about this letter. Uh so feel free to to pop in anything. Um David, did you, did you talk with Mr. Gassner anymore about this? Do you have anything else to add?
Um, well, what I can add is I think it I think it goes back a a few years before coming on the school committee, when the finance committee was always looking at um properties owned by Marblehead that had either been uh gifted to the town and what condition they were in and how they might be um repurposed, I guess, for for different reasons. And I think we all know from the Gary School experience, there's a defined process when when a school no longer becomes a school property, there there's a very defined process that it gets you know, to be clear, it it's voted on at town meeting. And then essentially, we decide what what happens with the proper property and ultimately, we know what the result is is for Gary. So I think um, yeah, certainly, it's it's been an ongoing um suggestion or recommendation by Charles. And when we decided to build the new school on the Bell site, it opened up a couple of opportunities going forward where we know uh Sarah Fox will remember this, you know, the Green Street property. Uh Green Street and um West Shore, that little piece of land that has some pretty cool bike paths in it and was studied but determined to be partially wetlands and uh essentially unsuitable for the type of school that we needed to build, so that's one property. There is um also, I don't think it's referenced in Charles, um Mr. Gassner's letter is a sliver of property that runs down um towards the um Tower School property and or pardon me, towards the um Charter School and the and the dog park behind the water tower there. So um and leads down to the recreational area that, for some historical reason, was deemed to be um a school property. But I think um the bigger question for us to think about, and whether it's too soon is when the new school opens in September, we will be vacating Evolith. And essentially vacating Coffin, and I think those are two big issues to think about. And where where we'll go forward, you know, um we know that when we considered um for instance, building a school at Bud Warren Park during the feasibility study that potentially the swap would become um Evolith would be a green space for the park and rec, tear down the school, it would become a recreational field. So that's, you know, an example of what would be considered and then, you know, what to do with Coffin. So, you know, yeah, there's there's a lot of questions out there and I don't think it's too soon to start thinking about it so that we don't have any um stranded expenses or costs related to maintaining the properties or if there's a better use of the property that could that could be put forward, so. Um, yeah, I think, you know, so I think it's worth starting to think about it.
Yeah, absolutely, I think it makes a lot of sense. Um I think one thing to note is that um the archive, the town archive is gonna be taking over the space at Woodger Road. So we do need to find a new space for, probably different space for our administrative um pieces. So I know that that's been kind of talked around in the past about Evolith and about the use of Coffin. Um when I talked with Jason, one of the committees that it that is functioning at this point um is a an affordable housing committee and they have expressed interest in looking at the land that the Coffin School is situated on. And then a large, the other committee that's that's functioning, a large gift apparently was made um for, I I I believe it was recreation for kids. Um and so the person who made the gift was a big hockey person, so the town's looking at the Green Street space as well as the some of the field space at the at the Evolith Building. Um for the possibility of different designs on the hockey rink, um outdoor, um there's there's a few different things that Jason had mentioned. Um so so like I said, there's multiple sort of irons in the fire at the town level that kind of, I think, fit nicely with this letter and and with kind of where we're at as a district. So for for me, this seems to make a lot of sense to to go towards that the M O U. Um but that we have the the Board of Selectmen in working with school committee and Board of Selectmen at the town level to kind of um, I don't know, come up with further ideas or have further discussions on this. Um but I'm certainly open to what others on the committee think.
So in my opinion, I think we need to be very thoughtful and and well-planned out about what the schools want before we open it up to the town. Um, you know, just just to look at a few things. One one thought that jumps out is the voice program, the whole idea behind the voice program originally being at Evolith was those students, she had a right to have a moving on from the high school and to move to a new a new facility for the next stage of their educational path. And that's why Evolith, you know, fit that that well. Um I think that we we should be very thoughtful about you know, not just finding a place to stick that program, but having some more intent behind that. Um, the second piece is our central administration kind of always just finds a home when we're homeless, it seems. Um we came to Woodger Road because we need, we were using that, the highs, we were putting the high school where we put the high school. And we've never really been intentful with where we put and why we put our central administration people somewhere. So I think that we should, as a school committee, kind of stand back and and see what is our vision for these various programs, and then on top of it, um before we jump into giving away any buildings we really, I think, need to sit back and see where the world's unfolding in the next year because um you you hear of other towns renting space so that they can have all those children in person. Um where there are limitations on how many people might be in a room. So we're, we are in a position right now where we don't have a luxurious space, but we're about to have a luxurious space. So um I just want to be very thoughtful in how we proceed through this. Um so I think as a school committee, we need to have those conversations and make some decisions, I don't know if we do it as a subcommittee or what, before we bring it to the town, because I I just think that's the logical path for all this.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I think we always want to be careful around, you know, right now, we don't, we may not have a use for some of those spaces, but you run a risk when you give property back, um particularly in a in a space like in a town like Marblehead where, you know, we're not expanding our borders anytime soon, and so the space is the space. Um and and so we, yeah, we want to make sure that that there's a lot of thought that goes into this um before we move forward on it.
Yeah, a lot of people were mad we didn't give out Evolith up right away, and if we had, we would be expelling millions right now in in trailers to put kids in um for the transition, so I just, I want to be a little more thoughtful.
Um, okay, so so maybe I should. Yeah, David?
You know, Sa- Sarah Sarah makes make some good points there and I guess I've always been a little, we we can take this offline, but I've been a little bit confused about the historical archives in Woodger Road and where that all originated and how that came about, and we can talk about that at some other point, but um you know, Sarah raises some some good good points, we need to just you know, be thoughtful about things and not put the car for the horse, so to speak, but there are there there are um some properties that don't have schools on them, so right sequentially, how we look at that. Um maybe those can be considered in advance and then um also as Sarah mentioned, you know, start looking at these things related to um even though John and Nan were really excited, they thought their new offices were over at the at the uh at the Bell School site, and I had to give them the bad news, but we weren't, we weren't able to fit in some additional square footage as as not as as uh as nice as that would have been. But I think, you know, it's it's a good point, so um but it's always something that the town needs to look at. And so uh yeah, any way we can participate and work together as a town to work through this and and be mindful. I think it's um it given, you know, just to, in the best fiscal interest of the town, as well as what the needs are at the schools. So.
Maybe what I'll do is I'll I'll talk with John offline and sort of hit uh he can start to get a feel and a and then kind of wrap around what the district will need. Um and then, I know when I talked with Jason, he said he'd be more than happy to come and talk with us um at a future meeting as well about more of the details behind some of the things that he had mentioned, so I'll set that as well.
Okay.
Just to add on to what David was saying, though, I mean, we know, we we went into Green Street pretty exhaustively. Um we know that that is never going to to hold a building for the schools. Um short of, you know, some type of outdoor learning or experiential learning campus. I mean, which, who knows, that may be somewhere we want to go, but short of that, there was really nothing the schools could do with that. I mean, we looked at that with with, you know, planning in mind. So we may want to look at that one sooner than later, if there is a potential use um for these other programs. Uh and then moving forward, if we i- if we do want to break this up into a smaller group to look at it, I'd be very interested in being, you know, part of that. Planning.
All right, all right, so we've got a few next steps. Um I will reconnect with Jason and get him on an agenda in the not too distant future. That's good, great. Uh David, any building project updates in the last week? Oh, you're muted.
Uh there's always updates, um the building is is going forward. So I think I mentioned last week, um we, as everybody knows, we had some snow. Um and it wasn't necessarily a delay to the project, but um the last slab on grade, as it's called technically, which is to pour the concrete for the gymnasium floor and the cafeteria floor. Um it didn't delay the project at all, but given the cold weather and the snow um Gilbane made the recommendation to uh move away from pouring the concrete because we actually would have occurred uh incurred additional cost due to the cold weather. So that is going to take place now on Monday, and based on the forecast everybody's seeing with sunny skies and seventy degrees we should be able to uh complete that and have the final concrete done. And the brick is showing up um on site about two truckloads a week. And bricklaying has started at the school, and so that's really exciting. And the next piece that we're looking for is shortly will be will be the windows. And um things are, things are moving right along, so all all's well.
Great. All good news? Thanks, David. Okay, so that brings us to new business, did anybody have any? All right, uh any other additional correspondence from last week? All right, so that brings us to adjournment of the meeting at eight forty-four. Wow, I think that's a record.
Before nine o'clock.
Before nine o'clock. Well done, everyone, well done.
Every week this will happen and every week they tell me I'm lying.
All right, thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.